I call the October 23 meeting, work session of Portsmouth City Council to order. And Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Simmons?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mayor Rowe?
Here.
Thank you.
First, let me welcome our General Assembly delegation. We love you guys.
Yes, we do.
We love you back.
But sincerely from our heart, we're really glad that you're here. You do so much for our community and for the state, but especially for our community. And thank you for taking time to be here. And I want to thank Dr. Cook, too, for being here. This is priority number one, job one, as they used to say in the old commercial, to find some type of relief for tolls. And Dr. Cook, who's the president emeritus, and he doesn't need an introduction, Old Dominion University, has helped us study the impact, the economic impact of the tolls. And he did an initial study, and it's been updated several different times. So without that, Dr. Cook?
Well, this is coming up. The mayor declared his love for the senators and delegates. I want to do the same. They're important people, and, of course, I used to come around and visit you all. And some of you are senior enough that I actually came around and visited you. That's a long time ago, but thank you.
And we're lucky in that regard. We have, and I'll claim we're the second-ranked senior, seniority.
I could be second oldest, too.
Thank God.
I've presented these kinds of data before, but now I have additional data and much more firm conclusions and the like, and I'd like to go through those. A few of the things have changed since we've really looked at this the last time. Tolls have increased three times, and the MLK is no longer told, and drivers have had a chance to adjust, and I'll show you some real measures of that. And we've had the number of closures and the like go down. For a while, that was really a severe problem. But anything I've done here, like most things, I'm on the shoulders of some other people who've really done a lot of work, and here they are, and I want to thank them. But what's happened? Well, first of all, in the years right after the tolls were imposed, traffic in the two tunnels went down 26 percent. Since then, it's recovered 6.4 percent, so we've come about one-quarter of the way back, but we're still well below where we are. However, one of the things that you should note here is if we're looking at the midtown tunnel, the decline here is 28 percent, and then the recovery is not very big at all. But if we're looking at the downtown tunnel, the decline was much larger, but the recovery has been more robust. Now, when we're looking at the downtown, there's one other thing I want to show you, and this is something to keep in mind, and that is, in 2004, traffic in the downtown tunnel peaked at more than 35 million cars annually. You get to 2013, and it's down to 30 million. So we had a 5-million decrease in traffic going through the downtown tunnel. It has nothing to do with tolls. There's sort of a downward trend there, and you can see it going down like this. So when you see some of the declines in traffic through the tunnels, one of the things to remember is the traffic was going down anyway. Now, why is that so? Well, predominantly, it's due to stagnant job creation in the region, and that, of course, is connected to defense spending. And I'm going to show you some data there, but that has particular relevance to Portsmouth because Portsmouth is surprisingly dependent upon defense spending and contracting, and I'll show you some data there. But anyway, this is something to keep in mind, and you can see we're getting some recovery there in the downtown tunnel. So it's obvious that tolls have made a difference, but we shouldn't ignore the fact that traffic was going down anyway. And the reason, of course, is a stagnant regional economy. Now, the good news part of this is, and I'll show you some data in a moment, that defense spending is headed back up, and that's going to revive traffic and, I think, do some good things for the region and as well for the city of Portsmouth. So now, I want to do a little experiment that I didn't show you last time, and I want to ask the question, well, what would tunnel traffic have been without the tolls? And I'm using some statistical techniques to estimate what traffic would be without tolls, okay? And tolls began in January 2014, so what I'm going to do here is estimate what the traffic is. But one of the things to take into account here is that it really makes a huge difference what day of the week we're talking about. It also makes a huge difference what month of the year we're talking about. In fact, these two factors, the day of the week and the month of the year, are more important than employment, the number of jobs, and whether there are more TEUs coming out of the port and so forth. If you want to predict traffic on a given day, you need to know what day of the week it is, and you need to know what month of the year it is. So these are very important factors, and I'm taking them into account then when I estimate traffic. But defense spending is important. You can see how defense spending is troughed, and this is national defense spending, but pretty much the same picture is true for Hampton Roads. And you can see now we think it's headed back up. But especially relevant here is we're in this fiscal year now, and it's going to be 686 million or billion nationally, and that's about 100 billion larger than it was just a couple of years ago. So that's a good news thing for Hampton Roads and a good news thing for Portsmouth as well. Now, if you talk about employment, jobs connected to the federal government and to the military, you can see that those topped off a long time ago, at the beginning of this century, actually, and went down, oh, almost 25,000. Now, the thing to remember about federal employment is these jobs are fiscal gold. The average federal employee in Virginia earns about 50 percent more than the average private sector employee, and their fringe benefits are much more generous. So when federal employees go down, that really hits us in the economic gut. And the thing to remember also is, I'm going to show you some data that show that the number of jobs in the region slowly has climbed as we came out of the recession. The problem is, we're losing these kinds of jobs and replacing them with lower-paid jobs. So the mix has changed, and that's also something that has slowed down the economy and been sort of a drag for us. Now, here are the percentage of jobs in the various cities that are dependent upon DoD contracts. Not things that are like the naval hospital and so forth. These are contracts like at shipyards and things like that, and Portsmouth is right up there at number two. So when defense spending stagnates, that really affects Portsmouth, and that's one of the reasons why that downtown tunnel traffic was headed downward because defense spending was stagnant or going down. If you look at contract spending in Portsmouth, it's pretty substantial. My estimate is that we have more than 2,000 people in Portsmouth who are employed directly on the contracts, and another 318 employed by those who supply them, and 922 employed by the businesses who serve the people who spend their salaries. So we're talking about not quite 10 percent of the jobs, maybe 8 percent of the jobs in Portsmouth are really directly connected to Defense Department contracting. Now, this is the experiment I ran. The top line is what I think traffic would have been without tolls. And that line comes about because I've taken all of these other factors into account: the day of the week, the month of the year, defense spending, the number of TEUs coming out of the port, and employment, the number of jobs. The red line is what it actually was. So this gap right here, which is 13,000, that's something that you could say probably is due to the tolls, okay? Well, how has this changed over time? Well, that green line is 2017 relative to the prediction. So you can see that some people are coming back into the tunnels, and I'm going to show you why I think, or one of the reasons I think this is so. But basically, drivers are sort of saying, I don't like this, but I'm going to pay that toll anyway, or some of them are. But, of course, some of them are going across the Gilmerton, some of them are carpooling, some of them are simply deciding, I'm not going to go at all. And I'll show you some data on Old Town Portsmouth in a moment that indicate that that's one of the areas, that's one of the parts of Portsmouth that's really suffered visibly from the tolls. But why are people beginning to come back? Well, the average wage rate in Hampton Roads in 2017 was $22.79 an hour, okay? Let's suppose that in order to do the Gilmerton or something like that, it means there's a 30-minute delay. You get there 30 minutes later. It might be a little bit more, a little bit less, but let's suppose that's so. Then the value of your time in that 30 minutes is $11.40, half of that $22.79, and $11.40 is greater than $209, which is the toll during the peak load time. So a lot of people are doing rough calculations in their mind, and they're saying, ah, I don't like it, but I'm going to pay it because my time is more valuable. After they get stuck in some traffic jams and queues for a while, they decide, well, okay, I'll do it. I'll pay. And so I would say there's still 10 percent or so who are refusing to pay, and they're either not coming, or they're going through those alternate routes, or they're carpooling or something like that. But this is a tip-off that people are coming back, and they are beginning to adjust. You can see more people going through the tunnels now are using EZ Pass. And that's sort of saying, well, I'm going to go through enough that this is going to make sense, and so that's what I'm going to do. Incidentally, all these slides will remain with you, so if you need these numbers, you'll be able to get them. There are positive and negative aspects to the tolls. Whether you are a beneficiary or you're getting hurt depends upon whether you have to travel and whether your customers have to travel through the tunnels, and then the bite that it takes out of your income. Because if I'm earning $500,000 a year, the tolls don't bother me. But the per capita income in Portsmouth, for example, is about $39,000 a year. So if I pay a toll, $2.09, 200 days a year going back and forth, that's more than $1,000. That's a big bite, okay? So I want to look at those kinds of numbers and show you that. We don't have lots of numbers for individuals going through the tunnels, but we have some numbers for cities, and I want to show you some of these to give you a notion of why I think Portsmouth is bearing a rather huge portion of the burden for the tolls. This is a very rough way to get at this, or one way to get at this, and these are census data showing where people live and where they work. Now, one of the things to keep in mind is that in Hampton Roads, more than 60 percent of people who have a job cross a city or county line to go to work. So there are lots of people doing that. In Portsmouth, an estimated 10,300 people go to Norfolk to work. Now, it's pretty hard to avoid using the tunnels if you're going to Norfolk to work. But if you look at Norfolk, there are 6,000 people going from Norfolk into Portsmouth, okay? And you look at all these numbers, and in that column right here, I'm adding up these numbers, going and coming, Portsmouth has the largest number of people going and coming out of the tunnels. And 33.6 percent, that's what percentage that is of Portsmouth's population. That's sort of a rough measure of how much the tolls are affecting cities. You can see Virginia Beach has 23,000 people going through the tunnels, but as a proportion of their population, it's very small. So the burden on Virginia Beach relatively is pretty small. And I put this in a pie chart, and you can see Portsmouth, by this measure, is bearing almost half the burden of the tolls in terms of who's actually using them. People who have to go to work or people who are coming to work in the city. And these little slivers, those are Norfolk and Virginia Beach. Suffolk, rather substantially affected as well. Now, another way to get at this is to say, what's the financial burden? And I just talked about this before in terms of what it would cost somebody to go through the tunnels 200 days a year to work back and forth? Well, it's $1,045. Let's now compare that to per capita income. You can see that Norfolk and Portsmouth are the lowest or the highest here in terms of the percentage of the per capita income that the tolls involve. Norfolk's per capita income is below that of Portsmouth slightly. But you can see that in Virginia Beach, once again, this is not such a huge thing because per capita incomes are higher there, and so the typical person, it's not quite the financial burden for them that it is for a resident of Portsmouth. So this is another way to look at burden. It's sort of a financial measure, okay? So you sort of put this together, the two things, the two criteria I've given you. One is how often and who's using these tunnels, and then, second, what's the financial burden? And Portsmouth is clearly number one. Suffolk would be number two, but pretty far behind. Norfolk may be number three, and I haven't included Chesapeake, for example, because they don't really use the tunnels, okay? So if we look at costs, I've just described those. Are there benefits? Well, of course, there are, and the benefits from the tunnels are reduced commuting time and more predictable commutes. Well, let's look at that. HRTPO looked at the reduction in delays that came about because of the tunnels. And it depends which direction you're going and when you're going. But, for example, going through the downtown tunnel going west reduced the commuting time by about six minutes. It was eight minutes for the midtown tunnel coming from Hampton Boulevard. But because drivers were shifting off to these free points, like a Gilmerton Bridge, wait times went up there. So when you're thinking about the costs and benefits of reducing travel time, they're going down most places, but some places are actually going up. There were longer lines and longer wait times to get through some of those free places. These are the other free places, and I give a hat tip to the HRTPO. I stole their graph because I think it's a good one. Like, I made a presentation of this to them this afternoon and gave them credit for that. Okay. Now, let's do a little bit of a thought experience in terms of what this wait time is worth. Once again, let me go back to that $22.79 an hour, okay? Now, if, just for purposes of illustration, let's suppose somebody saves four minutes a day, 200 days a year, that's 13 hours a year. 13 hours a year is worth about $300. So the reduction in wait time to this person, other than maybe simply annoyance, we'd value their time, and economists would at about $300. There are about 100,000 people going through the tunnels as a part of the commutes, if you looked at that previous table I had. Well, 100,000 times 300 is about $30 million. That's the value of the time that people are saving now because the tunnels are there. From that, we'd have to take into account, you know, longer wait times at the Gilmerton and things like that. HRTPO actually came up with a smaller estimate of this in the study they did a couple of years ago. And there are fuel savings and environmental costs, and let's not forget that there are trucks. Trucks aren't counted in those commuting data because trucks aren't commuters. So in the midtown tunnel, for example, there are about 2,200 trucks a day, and if they save four minutes, then the value of their time is worth about 1.2 million. Now, if you think the four minutes is too small, then multiply it by two, or three, or four, or whatever you think is appropriate to come up with the value of the wait time, okay? But that's a saving, and you have to sort of net that out against the costs. Now, my estimate is that the city of Portsmouth has lost about $8.8 million in taxable sales. And all one has to do is look at, for example, Old Town to see some businesses have closed. And I did this, a previous study, four or five years ago, and about half of the businesses I talked to then are gone now, for whatever reasons. This shows you Old Town. These are taxable sales. Pre-tunnel, pre-tolls, 8.3, and you can see what's happened since then. Now, there may be other parts of the city of Portsmouth that are better off because their customers can get to them more easily, and they're not quite as affected because they don't have to go through at peak times, and people can come at discretionary times. And I'm not going to argue that's not so, but I would say that Old Town, Portsmouth, has really taken the brunt of the economic damage here. And I need to close with this. Don't blame it on President Broderick or the board of visitors. They're not responsible for anything I say, and they're probably pleased that that's so. But let me respond to your questions and comments.
Well, first, thank you very much for this very detailed and thorough analysis and very understandable briefing. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, if I can ask, Dr. Cook, I sincerely appreciate your analysis, and I think it really reinforces a lot of things that we believed for the past several years. I guess my question, sir, is, let's project this out to the future. We know that tolls are going to rise every year under the ERT contract. Can you give us, you know, whip out your crystal ball and give us a prognostication in terms of what this is going to look like maybe in five and 10 years from now? Because if the damage has been done to the magnitude that you've indicated thus far with, you know, $2.09 tolls, what's it going to look like in five and 10 years when tolls continue to increase?
It's going to deteriorate. Right now, well, let me start by saying, the contract the Commonwealth did with Elizabeth River Company was one of the worst I've ever seen.
Amen.
It's, I just can't understand how somebody could negotiate something like that. But anyway, as you know, it gives the ERC the right to increase tolls 3.5 percent a year, or more if the CPI is higher. And if you project that up, we're talking about a toll of about $20 during peak times in 40 or 50 years. So if there's a problem now, then raising tolls faster than the CPI is going to only make this worse. So we're not talking about a good circumstance. Now, I do want to tell you about something that we're doing somewhat in the region, and I want to sort of call that attention to you for the two tunnels here. If you're going to North Carolina, or you're going across the Coleman Bridge, or you're going to the eastern shore, if you are a resident, you pay lower toll. Now, I have a brother who lives in Key Biscayne, Florida. To get to Key Biscayne, you go from Miami across the Rickenbacker Causeway. If you're an ordinary person like me, you pay $3, but he pays $30 a year because he's a resident. There might just be a way for Portsmouth and several other cities to charge lower tolls to individuals who are residents, because we're already doing it three places in the region. So it isn't that this would be something that we just invented. It's already possible to do, and that's happening, for example, going into North Carolina now if you go on the Chesapeake Expressway. Now, the downside of this, though, is because of that contract, if it costs the ERC money, the Commonwealth's going to have to reimburse them. The money's going to have to come from somewhere. So there aren't many free lunches here to be had, but we're talking about a circumstance that isn't good now and is only going to get worse. This is, again, well, somebody asked me to do a quick estimate of what it would cost to buy out the ERC, and it's a stupendously large number. Because if you, an economist would do this by saying, what's the present value, today's value, of your future stream of profits? And their future stream of profits is very healthy because of that 3.5 percent and so forth. So I don't see that as a viable thing to do, but it might be possible to do something for people who are the actual commuters going back and forth if they can establish residence. And that might be a negotiable thing in the General Assembly.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to thank you, too, Dr. Cook. That's really been what we all felt was going to, so I appreciate you giving it a little bit of clarity to it. And in your analysis, have you also looked at the fact that with the projects that are coming online, as I understand it, the ERC pricing is going to have an effect on the price that they can put on the other toll projects?
Yes.
Which could impact the cost to all of the Hampton Roads residents?
Yes.
Because as I understand it, and no one's talking about that, but they have, if I understand, that the contract, which I agree is the worst contract I've ever seen, it sets an artificial ceiling on the other tolls. So somehow, as I look going forward, somehow, the General Assembly is going to end up having to pay some money to make up if they lose any money.
It certainly looks.
Does that make sense? Am I wrong on that?
It certainly looks that way, that this is set up in a way that the General Assembly is going to have to do with a banker.
Yes. Well put. That's, I mean, so I guess.
I'm sorry, I'm a finance.
I guess, and I guess I'll.
And it's just a bad contract, and it's going to last another 50 years.
But I guess, follow-up question, if I may. That may be something that Senate Finance and Appropriation, we need to probably start looking at that, because that's going to come back to us, and maybe we can link one of your suggestions of residency discounts and use that as leverage going forward because...
Speaking of the residency discount, for the purpose of establishing who has residence, would it be people who own property, people who have permanent residence, and they are able to demonstrate that? I mean, how are you going to come up with a definition of who is a resident?
I don't know how it's done here, but in the Florida example, you have to show a driver's license, and you have to show that you've paid taxes.
Okay.
And if you can do that, then they make you a resident.
Bill Scott.
Chesapeake does it.
Okay.
Dr. Cook enjoyed your presentation. Under the adage that all contracts are made to be broken, I guess this is more of an attorney question. And we all know that that contract is about the size of a phone book.
Yes.
Aren't there some performance criteria in there that's incumbent upon ERC to perform?
Yes, and this is a yes, but we're talking about a heck of a court case. And then it will get down to, well, levels of performance, and this, and this, and this. I'm not an attorney, but I would not advise Portsmouth or the region to go that direction unless they really think they have the goods.
No, I'm thinking of the state.
State.
And the other part of that question, who's looking at the compliance? And maybe this is a question for our delegation. Who's going behind to see?
Well, the person who signed the contract is no longer in the governor's mansion, unfortunately. And it was done without any involvement on the part of the legislature. So that pretty much shackles us in terms of what we can do as legislators, because it was, the contract was signed by the then-governor and drawn up by Sean Condon.
But is there a Department of Compliance within the...
Bill, I think it's handled through VDOT.
Yes.
And frankly, I would tell you that two years ago, I asked for some legislation which would require VDOT to give us an annual report in terms of the revenue that ERC was making on this project, and while they finally come through and done it this year, it wasn't even a complete product as it was. So you ask a great question.
So you want to know who the watchdog is?
Who's the watchdog? Our dogs. Contract ethic has to be...
I think you're right.
What is the J-Lark study that's hanging in the air, not being accomplished?
There's a lot of other studies, Eric.
Well, yeah, I mean, every year, Vice Mayor, as you know, I mean, a lot of the members, you know, have requests for J-Lark studies, which is the Joint Legislative Audit and Review Commission, for those of you who don't know the acronym, which is sort of the gold standard in state government in terms of analysis and economic projections and legal analysis. in state government in terms of analysis and economic projections and legal analysis. I think, you know, a lot of the Commonwealth, we all have our studies, and frankly, every year, I think Delegate James and I have tried to put that in the House. I believe Senator Luke has tried to put that in the Senate as well. And, you know, I mean, it just doesn't go anywhere. Frankly, the Speaker of the House controls a lot of what happens in J-Lark, and I think that, you know, my particular bill, I mean, never even made it to committee last year because they just killed all the J-Lark study and the study requests. So it's, you know, I think the problem that we face is, we've got to get in a very long line to get this done, and we have to stay persistent at it, but, you know, perhaps there are other ways to do it.
I wasn't being flippant when I say the same place all the other studies are. They are wherever they are, they're all together. We just don't know where that is.
Yeah, we, I think, I think I'm right on this, Steve. They told us on the House side that there is a three-year backlog.
Three, yeah.
So you have to get in the line, and that's a rolling three years. And, but certain studies do get moved up.
Some do rise to the top.
If I could point out, Mr. Mayor, I think one of the frustrations we have in Richmond, at least in my experience, is that, you know, it's very, very difficult to get, you know, the rest of the Commonwealth to pay any attention to this. And sometimes it's difficult to get other members from Hampton Roads to pay any attention to this. You know, I mean, the only time that I can think of hearing about Portsmouth tolling in the House in discussions was when they were trying to toll I-66 inside the Beltway in Fairfax County, and all we heard was, well, we don't want to end up like Portsmouth. And that's a little frustrating.
Yeah.
And I've always, you know, been wondering if there is a way that we can enlist maybe some more regional cooperation in terms of getting this, you know, brought to the fore and in the Assembly, and if there is a strategy by which we can enlist more of our colleagues throughout the rest of the Commonwealth, recognizing that at least 10% of the Commonwealth's GDP, I think, Dr. Cook, is raised through the through port revenue. So it seems to me that, you know, a good deal of what supports the Commonwealth starts here, and unfortunately, we're stuck with the baggage.
I would think that Chris Jones would be interested in the Suffolk numbers that I put up there.
I'm sure he will.
Dr. Cook, in the slides you show, where the commuter is going back and forth to work from Portsmouth to Norfolk and Virginia Beach, were there accountability in there for the students that transport or commute back and forth from Norfolk State and Old Dominion universities?
Basically, no. And this is simply people who have jobs and are going from one place to another.
Just speaking off the top of my head and picking up on what's been said, what do you all think about asking Dr. Cook if the Suffolk City Council would agree to do this presentation, the Suffolk City Council, with their General Assembly delegation, which would include Chairman Chris Jones?
I think that's an excellent idea.
Take us to the Hampton Roads office. How's your schedule? Good?
If you're scheduled, I'll come.
Well, how about if I call Mayor Lynda Johnson then and see if we can do that?
Does he have someone else? Yes, I could talk with Patrick Roberts.
I really do. Good piece. Have more focus than I do Chesapeake.
Mayor, we scheduled for Dr. Cook to present at the HRPDC. However, because of the scheduled this past meeting, he did not get to present, but we said to them, we would like for him to come back. He did present today to their staff, but we'd like everybody in the region to hear it, as you all asked us to do.
With the staff, we got down and dirty with the numbers and went through some stuff because I wanted them to understand where all this stuff came from. That was a good meeting.
Yeah, did the executive director show an indication of reschedule your briefing?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Because I have a part of Suffolk and 18th Senatorial District, when that meeting happens, I'd like to also tag along.
Please, yes.
Needs to be a team effort.
All right, well, we'll start that conversation tomorrow.
Very good. Yeah, I think we should invite all of you all to join if you can.
Sure.
Absolutely.
You can arm twist your collars.
I represent part of Suffolk as well, so.
Should I give Chairman Jones a heads up, or do you want to do that?
I would. Yes, sir.
Want me to do it, or you do it?
Whatever you wish, sir. I have no problem with.
Let's both do it.
I would do it.
Okay.
I'll do it. Thank you. Well, can you call me when you get a date?
Yes, sir.
And I'll just have him hold it.
I will. Any other questions? This is very enlightening. And I was particularly intrigued in the prediction of what it would be without the tolls, and that's unique. Well, thank you again.
Yes, thank you.
We're going to now segue to the balance of our agenda.
Yes, yes. Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, and our General Assembly delegation. We will have Mrs. Sherri Neal, who is our Intergovernmental Affairs Manager, to come forward and review with you the 2019 state legislative initiatives for the city of Portsmouth. Ms. Neal.
Thank you for the time, and then Mayor Rob, members of the Vice Mayor, members of the Council. So the members are going to just briefly walk through the legislative initiatives for the 2019 General Assembly session. We have about, we have five initiatives and one budget amendment. The first one is dealing with this particular section of the code that deals with the required minimum rate for recycling. So over the past 10 years, the Virginia General Assembly has considered, but not passed, bills that would have either reduced or banned the use of disposable plastic items. And until 2017, China was the leading importer of plastics and recycled materials from around the world. That has changed. China found that the quality of the materials they were receiving were declining and contamination rates were increasing. They were no longer receiving clean and sorted materials, but instead their shipments were full of scrap metals, with food and product residue and scrap bales with materials that were outside of the bale specifications. This has lowered the value of the materials, increased their processing costs, and resulted in higher instances of unusable materials needed to be discarded, leading to stress on their communities and their environment. So as a result, China notified the World Trade Organization in July 2017 of its intention to ban the import of 24 different kinds of waste, including some post-consumer plastics beginning January 2018. In November 2017, China announced its limits for material contamination rates at 0.5%. In the previous, it was 1.5%. For most important recyclables not mentioned in the ban, achieving these very low levels of contamination is challenging, and most material recovery facilities in the United States or anywhere are not yet prepared to comply with this new directive. The impact of China's decision varies across the United States, with most of those heavily impacted being forced to slow their processing rates down at their plants in an attempt to comply with the new contamination rate policy. Consequently, some materials that are used to be collected, that used to be collected as recyclables, are now being sent to landfills to relieve the congestion caused by the slower processing rates. And this presents another problem because of the polymers used to develop the plastics that don't decompose, and the chemical components over time will lead you to the earth and into our aquifers. So this particular section of the code of Virginia deals with the recycling rates. And what we are asking here, because it's at 15 and 25%, that in lieu of a General Assembly adopting any substantial legislation reducing or banning the use of disposable plastic items, that they consider having this particular section of the code changed so that the rates better reflect the current market and their processing conditions at the plant. The second one is felony drug distribution convictions in Manhattan. In 1996, the federal government passed the Personal Responsibility and Work Opportunity Act, and this bans individuals with felony drug convictions from receiving SNAP or Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program benefits. SNAP benefits were formerly known as food stamps, which were provided to low-income individuals with financial assistance to pay for food. The SNAP program is fully funded by the federal government, but the states administer the program and share in administrative costs. This ban on individuals with felony drug convictions does not apply to individuals with any other type of felony. You can be a mass murderer, you can be anything, a pedophile, you can be anything and have a felony conviction, and you can receive SNAP benefits. It's only those people who have drug convictions for distribution or intend to distribute. So the federal code, the statute provides for states to opt in that they can ban out of this if they so choose. And by 2014, 40 states had opted out totally of the lifetime ban, and they set various eligibility policies for talented individuals. By 2015, 38 of those states had opted out of the federal ban, allowing persons with felony drug convictions to receive both food and financial assistance in an effort to provide social support and reduce recidivism. By 2016, 18 states had moved to completely abandon the federal prohibition, with 26 states partially easing these restrictions, Virginia being one of those. And by 2018, only three states still enforce a lifetime ban, that's West Virginia, South Carolina, and Mississippi. So currently, in the Virginia Code, the Virginia Code only provides an exemption to felony drug possession. If you have a felony drug possession charge, you can get services in Virginia, but you have to go through treatment or have completed treatment. If you have a conviction for distribution or possession with intent, you cannot get anything. You get no help at all. So social services, the way social services in Virginia implements this, they kind of go, they look more to the federal code, and so they are, of course, banning persons who have distribution charges. So what we're suggesting here is that this section of the code should be changed to either make it a felony offense for controlled substances, period, with the treatment attached to it, or make it simply for a felony offense of controlled substances and pull all the extra treatment out of it, or just repeal that particular section of the code altogether for social justice, equitable justice. The next one is dealing with the penal institutions and the right to vote. I'm sorry.
And you did speak with the Secretary of Health?
Yes, yes, we did speak with the Secretary of Health on this one.
Was that the Virginia Ministerial meeting?
Yes, and he seemed some interest in it. The next one is dealing with the...
I think, I think one of the, one of the reasons is that, to leave the code as it is, it has an adverse impact on a particular segment of the population.
Yes, ma'am. And with all of what this state has been trying to do with recidivism, it's another blockage that's put out there. So these people, when they come out, they're not stable, and they wind up actually recidivating with all of the opioid drugs that's going on and things of that nature. It's problematic.
Yeah, it makes no sense that you could be convicted for knocking off 10 banks.
That's right. Yeah. That's right.
The third one is dealing with voting. And so currently, the code of Virginia allows for people who are detained, who are being detained for misdemeanor, and they're awaiting trial, or they're awaiting trial and haven't been, they've been, I'm sorry, any person who's confined while awaiting trial or for having been convicted of a misdemeanor, provided that the trial release date is scheduled on or after the third day of the preceding election, they are able to vote absentee. Any person who's awaiting trial and is a resident of a county or city where they're confined on their request can be taken to the polls to vote on election day if the trial date is postponed and they did not have an opportunity to vote absentee. I don't think many people know this. And so the issue is that if you don't know to ask, you don't ask. So it's sort of like a vote of suppression thing. So the first request of this piece is that this section of the code be changed to make it mandatory that this information is provided to detainees when they are in jail. And it can be as simple as a pamphlet or a leaflet or something, give it to them, advising them of what their voting rights are. The second part of this would be dealing with another section of the code, which is dealing with the process for notification regarding restoration of civil rights. And as I understand it, the Director of Department of Corrections, for people who have felony convictions, when they're coming out of penal institutions, they are provided notification of what their rights are, but it seems to be only for those people who are coming out of state facilities. So it's not reaching down to your local jails and your regional jails. So that would be the similar situation where they would also receive notification to anybody coming out of a penal institution, not just at the state level.
In most cases, wouldn't they have had their rights suspended and they would have to apply? So is that kind of information that you're talking about?
Exactly, exactly. The next one is dealing with FOIA. And currently, FOIA provides that no provision in their chapter shall be construed as denying public access to records, the names, position, job classification, official salary, rate of pay, records, all allowances or reimbursements paid to any officer, official employee of a public body. And so though this is, this available information of PII, or personal identifiable information, presents an exposure to employees' information, and it proposes a significant risk for identity theft through cyber hacking, cybersecurity and hacking. Furthermore, it places the integrity of a municipal system at risk due compromised accounts of email addresses. With the information obtained through this type of request, a nefarious actor could open loans, transact business, and profit from the information that's gathered. Additionally, citizens of the city who supply contact information for reasons of receiving communications from the city must specifically inform the city that they wish contact, their contact information to not be disclosed. Otherwise, in a FOIA, their information goes out as well. So there are some issues right now, we feel, with FOIA, the way that they deal with phishing expeditions for public employees and information. And we would like FOIA counsel to study this matter and see what they can do about addressing it. The next one, we don't have to go into much detail, we just had a long presentation from Dr. Cook, so we all know what that one's about. And then last, but not least, is a budget amendment request for the extraordinary maintenance at the Mount Cowal Cemetery Complex for the restoration of the gravestones and grave markers. And as you recall, we did, were able to get that into, we had those events, San Antonio loses, all, we had the governor come down, we had the signing. We're on the registry now for historical cemeteries, but because of what was going on with Medicaid, we didn't get the money for the historical markers. So we're looking for $64,000 for that piece. So those are our legislative initiatives. And then just quickly, these are listed here are our supportive state public policy initiatives that the city is supporting. These lists encompasses things from HRT as well as HRTPO, HR-TAC, and HRPDC, VML. And on the one for, and just quickly, if I may, just take a second, these first two in here, something we learned during the Hurricane Florence is that in Hampton Roads, there are no shelters that are hurricane rated, and that's ridiculous. Had Florence come through here the way it came through in other areas, we could have had a Katrina on our hands. And so going forward, going forward, you know, the state really should consider that if you're putting money into any building, a college, or a new school, or whatever, it should be hurricane rated. And the ones that are in existence, like, you know, some of the new ones, like Todd Water Community College in Portsmouth, that should be retrofitted also to be hurricane rated.
About that for a moment. Dr. Patton reached out to Michelle Woodhouse. She was totally on Dr. Woodhouse to use TCC, which is one of the newest buildings, a well-built building in the community on high ground. She had to run it up, all the way up to the chancellor's office, back down, and the answer was no. And so the local college provost was for it, but through that bureaucratic process, we lost the opportunity to use a good shelter. That needs to be fixed in some fashion.
The only one in Hampton Roads and really outside Van Bero's was the community college in Franklin.
Paul DeCaprio.
Paul DeCaprio.
That was used?
No, that was the only hurricane proof in this whole Portsmouth-Hampton. There are none in this part of the state. So that's an important, very important legislative piece.
This item did come up at the most recent Appropriations Committee meeting, in which they talked about looking... they talked about looking to rate some, and I shared it with you about. So I think this is going to bubble up because we were blessed that we didn't get the full brunt of last hurricane. But everybody, at least most of the committee members, were surprised that we didn't. The only one was Paul DeCamp. And, because they're even, and I think, so we need to reach out to Aubrey Lane, who is sort of spearheading, trying to find some financing for that, because, you know, we were talking about spending millions of dollars and having people go to mega churches and those types of things, but that doesn't, we need to go into a different direction. So Aubrey was tasked, so Sherry, if you want, if you're okay with him, that's another body to talk to in Richmond.
She will. Okay. Go on.
And that's the end of my presentation.
We both consider a resolution tonight in the agenda.
Denied. Any questions? No? Thank you.
What advice do you all have for us?
You're usually the point with presenting your issues and following up by supporting us when you come up with Richmond. So I think if we continue along that vein, we're going to be in good shape, especially when it comes to these items that you're going to do resolutions for.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to also commend you, especially the mayor and Sherry. We, because, you know, we talked about the inability to get in studies, but one of the tactics that we used last year was we introduced a study for the payment of taxes. Well, we didn't get, we got killed, this delegate heretic, as I already said, all of our studies, but we were able to get the Speaker of the House to commend the study. And I thank the mayor for coming, and Sherry, we worked with all the port cities, and we now have the Virginia Economic Development Partnership. We'll deliver a letter, which I will share with you guys, outlining four groups of incentives that will be specialized just for the port city hosts, so that we can, and Economic Development Director has been very active in that, and we're really looking forward to it, because hopefully we can find some new revenue streams from those, at those communities. So I want to thank the council for their involvement, and hopefully, because we can use some more money, and that's what we're working on. And thank the other members of the General Assembly on that one.
And if I may, Mr. Mayor, first I want to commend you all, because, you know, being present during this session is very, very important, just having visibility. But I would remind the council that every week we have the Hampton Roads Caucus, and that is every member, House and Senate from Hampton Roads. We get together and we talk about nonpartisan issues, typically dealing with economic development. And I think those are the opportunities for us to really showcase the challenges that we face as a community. And I would encourage Mr. Mayor you and the council, and frankly, anybody in the city, to come and join us for those meetings. They're public. We do get good attendance generally. But I think this is, being present and having input, you know, really does make a difference to what we do, and especially with the various legislation that, you know, you will be presenting by resolution tonight. You know, coming, you know, when they're up in front of committees, it helps to be there to testify, and I realize sometimes it's very short time fuse on that. But having, you know, elected members, elected leaders from the city to show up and testify in front of a committee does make a big difference to our colleagues. So the only advice I could give you is, you know, as involved as you have been, and bless you and thank you for that, more is more is more. So keep it up.
Well, a big thank you for what you do for us and the hard work that you do, not just during the session, but throughout the whole year. And thank you for taking time tonight to come and meet with us and see our legislative concerns and give us advice. We really appreciate what you do. Any comments from other members of council?
And over the next weeks, our legislative manager will be working with each of our legislators, talking about our items, and then from there, they will determine, strategize how they will carry them forward, and we will report back to council on that before they go on the end of the year.
Thank you.
But typically, what we do is, we try to carry the same legislation in both chambers. So it'll be covered on both sides.
Very good.
So whatever you two cover, I guess I got it on the other side.
There you go.
Very good. Thank you all.
As I look around.
Well, you're the best anyway, so we're...
That's what they say, but it's not true.
Thank you.
All right. I'll call Lyndon Johnson, the first thing.
Very good, and I'll follow Patrick.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Go.
Thank you all.
Five minutes for you. I say they're going to leave now.
Yes. We'll take two minutes.
Two minutes.
Dr. Patton?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, we have actually nine city manager report items coming forward tonight, but we have one that we deferred, and we're bringing it back, and I'll just call it to your attention. It's the Mobile Command Control and Communications Center Electronic Infrastructure. And bringing that back, the match for this grant is coming out of asset forfeiture funds through the Police Department instead of, as we pulled it, not coming out of CIP. So that will be under unfinished business.
Because this was deferred and not tabled, we don't need a motion to take it off the table. We'll go ahead and read the caption, entertain a motion, and proceed.
Very good. We have an adoption of an ordinance accepting a bulletproof vest partnering program grant in the amount of $46,750 from the United States Department of Justice, and appropriating that said as revenue to the FY 2019 general fund. We have the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, and it's adoption of an ordinance accepting the Memorial Justice Assistance Grant in the amount of $85,615 from the United States Department of Justice. We have an adoption of an ordinance accepting a four-for-life program grant funds in the amount of $73,104.72 from the Virginia Department of Health Office of Emergency Medical Services. And these funds will go toward the fire rescue and emergency services. The next is adoption of an ordinance accepting aid to localities fund in the amount of $330,675 from the Virginia Department of Fire Programs, and appropriating said funds for the FY 2019 Grants Fund to use by the Fire Emergency and Rescue Department. The next is an adoption of an ordinance accepting a hazmat team equipment exercise and training grant in the amount of $30,000 from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management Services. And next, we have the FY 2019 Community Service Performance Contract, which is required by the state for our behavioral health care services, and it's an adoption of a resolution to approve the FY 2019 Community Service Performance Contract for the Portsmouth Department of Behavioral Healthcare Services. And these are the services of which the state validates through this performance contract that the agency is providing for our citizens. The next is approval of a CEPSA amended article of incorporation, and it's adoption of a resolution approving, number one, a concurrent resolution adopting amended and restated articles of incorporation for the Southeastern Public Service Authority of Virginia, and number two, amended and restated articles in the Corporation of the Southeastern Public Service Authority of Virginia, and authorizing the mail to execute same.
Let's, when you talk about that, talk about the public hearing, please.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, last year, CEPSA moved forward legislation to remove the term limits on City Council appointees, so that staff members who are typically the City Council appointees can continue to serve, and the CEPSA Board can benefit from their longevity and experience, unlike the governor's appointees who have particular term limits. That legislation did go through, and in order to enact and make those amendments to the CEPSA Board, each and every member locality has to have a public hearing and amend, and vote to amend the bylaws or pass a resolution, so that those bylaws can be changed, so that the staff, you know, what we commonly refer to as the staff position, no longer has a term limit, and we won't be obligated to pick additional members if the City Council chooses not to. And so there'll be a public hearing and an ordinance, a resolution to that effect.
Can we continue? All right, we have adoption of a resolution endorsing the 2019 state legislative package and the 2019 federal legislative package. Next, we have an adoption of a resolution in support of amending the Virginia Code to permit casino gambling in the Commonwealth of Virginia. That concludes the items that come before you tonight, Mayor.
We have the items submitted by council, which we discussed last night, which is the adoption of an ordinance to amend the schedule in which we provide money to the schools, limiting it from one date to another date.
That's appropriation, yes.
Yes.
So...
Is that written down somewhere for us? This is, the ordinance is in the book.
Right, I'm just covering that. So what it does in effect is move it from the 30th of the month, the end of the month, to the first of the month. Good, good.
All right.
And so they'll get two payments, almost back to back.
That's right. They will get it, if council approves it tonight, we will release the money tomorrow for the October, and then they will get, starting the November 1st.
How much money is that per month?
Four point, I think it's four point, I think it's $4.4 million. Yeah. It's $4.4 million.
Per month?
Per month.
So in one week's time, they'll have close to $9 million.
That's right. Okay.
Should help their cash flow.
Yes. You want me to continue, ma'am?
Please.
Okay. Action items for report backs under, to City Council. Under the public work session, there were no report backs on the renter's warrants. There were no action items on fleet financial, and the PCBN cost comparisons were presented to you last night in that discussion. On the non-agenda speakers, we are addressing Walter J. Carter's request, and that is in your book as the answer. We are looking into Mrs. Alvora Johnson, who called our attention about the stop signs. Have our traffic engineering looking at that. And then we will have, we are working toward the request for recreation centers for use for forums or those kinds of things. We're working on a piece for that, which actually deals with putting some pieces in place as it pertains to us working with civic leagues. And if you want to speak to that for a minute, Moustache.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, in part based on the inquiry that was put forward about forums, civic forums, and recreational centers, the city is going to convene the civic leagues and try to come up with a set of guidelines. As you all know, and we've had these discussions before, from a staff standpoint, the staff does not want to be in a position of trying to police or marshal political civic forums. And so the staff is going to sit down and talk with the civic leagues and try to come up with some common rules across the cities in terms of how those will be handled in that fashion. We'll also explain to civic leagues, if they're using a facility for that purpose, that the city, the city staff is not responsible for that particular forum. That way, we can address the public, the public interest concern without drawing staff into a political activity. In that same vein, I have spoken to Mr. Sergio O'Neill, and I have a call into Mr. Callburn, but I have not heard back from him to address the most immediate concern.
Not to put Tepper on the spot, but we, you got a request today...
Yes, sir.
...to use the council chamber.
Yeah.
Can you brief council on what that request is?
Sure. We received a request from a citizen, it's not from a specific group, asking about using the City Council Chamber for, what did I tell you he wanted to use?
Asset forfeiture.
Yes, asset forfeiture seizure. And he said it was going to be open to the public, and he said that they were going to be working in connection with a couple of groups, a group called FACE, F-A-C-E, I have no idea what those initials stand for.
Libertarian.
They're libertarians. And there was another group that he said that they would be working with, and I've had conversations with the city manager and city attorney and the mayor about that. Where we are right now, normally, we would not allow the use of council chamber for such forums, but because we have in the past allowed for forums, candidate forums with the Chamber of Commerce, I think we did the Deltas, and a couple of other groups, it's kind of open, it's put a crack in the door for different events, and it's going to definitely require council and management to come together, decide what uses are going to be allowed in our council chamber. Because this is a public building, it's thought that it should be open to the public if it's available, and I just need to know what parameters are going to be for use.
We need to work, we need to work with them.
Is this a date certain use?
Basically, what the request was, he did not want to give me a date, because he did not want me to tell him no, and basically, he would go with whatever date I gave him.
All right. How about if we do this? How about if we ask city staff to work in collaboration, which you do very well, and come back with a recommendation for us to consider at the next work session?
Yes, sir. We would appreciate doing that, ma'am.
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
Mayor, for this specific request or overall?
Both.
Okay.
I mean, it ought to be an overarching policy.
Sure, sure.
And that's what we're trying to work for. Will we be ready?
Policy for city council chambers above and beyond other city facilities, recreation centers.
Correct.
Mayor, you're asking for us to bring it back on the 13th. Can we give a little more time than try to rush? You see what I'm saying? Because we wanted to deal with the civic league.
Bring it back to us in November. Is that okay with everybody?
We're not going to, if it's going to involve, and I understand what Dr. Patton is saying, if it's going to involve the civic league discussion, that's going to be a little bit longer. We can probably address the one request, but not the overall.
Okay. All right, very good. Okay, very good. That's right. I have one more, ma'am. All right, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, as promised during the FY 2019 budget process, I indicated that I would work with the city's financial team to try and identify funds for consideration to give city employees a holiday bonus in December. The FY 2017-18 operating budget appropriated 5.8 million of fund balance from the general fund. Based on unaudited draft general fund financial statements that we've received for fiscal year in June 30th, 2018, the actual use of fund balance was approximately $1 million, which is significantly less than the amount budgeted, which was 5.8. As city manager, I'm recommending to you, the members of City Council, to give me direction to approve moving forward, to use a portion of the fund balance savings for one-time holiday bonuses for city employees and Portsmouth Retirement Plan retirees and beneficiaries. The cost estimates are as follows. City employees at a $1,000 bonus net pay is $1.9 million. Retirees and beneficiaries at a $500 bonus at gross pay is $510,000. Keep in mind, the pay for the beneficiaries and retirees is handled by John Hancock, and they have to follow what the rules and the laws are in regard to such payments. This bonus applies to full-time city employees with a hard date beginning before January 1, 2018, and this does not include constitutional officers and their staff, judges, and employees who are paid by grants. The anticipated bonus check issuance day would be December 7th, and then city employees will get their two regular checks would be December 14th and December 28th, so they will get three checks in the month of December.
So you ask, you ask for our guidance?
Yes, because it takes time.
Absolutely.
It takes time for us to get all the done, that's why we...
Everybody opposed to it.
It's your question.
We'll move forward.
Yes, we'll have it for the next meeting, yes. All right, that concludes my presentation, ma'am.
While we're on the subject of employees, really forgot to mention that at our last meeting, we had a tropical storm a few weeks ago, Michael. meeting, we had a tropical storm a few weeks ago, Michael, that did some pretty heavy damage, and our public works employees, like they always do, were out fixing things up, getting things back in order, and, you know, kudos to them, they always do a terrific job. I'm just curious, hopefully, they get paid for that. I know the city was off on Wednesday, Thursday, and a couple hours on Friday while they were still out working. I'm sure, I'm sure they get compensated for that.
Right, Mrs., there have been some questions in that regard, which HR director have worked and met with those who had those specific questions in regard to public utilities. I can't say specifically for each person that may have caught the inquiry, but Mrs. Gooden has worked with those department heads in that regard to any questions that have come up.
Okay, you'll keep us informed of what that is.
Yes, I will. Actually, I'll have you, I can send you an email tomorrow.
One more thing, I guess, gee, it's been a few months ago, we were all enthusiastic about a sale project-
Oh, yes.
-in the, in the roundabout, and what's the, what's the status of that? Can you brief us at this time?
Yes, Mr. Moody, I can bring you up to date. In fact, I got an email from Mrs. Barbara Vincent today. The support to Portsmouth Art, and Mrs. Barbara Vincent indicated that the Breeden contribution for the $100,000 for the fabrication of the sale, they have the money to do that. They don't have the dollars in hand, but Breeden has made a promise to them. Where they are falling short is that the pilings, the pilings, in order for the sale to go in, we are projecting four pilings that Mr. Engineer has actually spoken with Mrs. Vincent. To drill the pilings is about $20,000, $20,000 to $25,000 each. We have not, yeah, each piling. And Mr. Wright explained to me, you know, the pilings out there, the same kind of pilings would have to be to ensure the stability of this. So, right now, we're looking at, in order for the pilings to be placed, it would take anywhere from 75 to possibly $80,000 for that work to be done. And one of the things that we as staff had talked about is that, with the group run out and getting someone to support a beautiful sale in our roundabout, if, it was the desire of council for us through our CIP, and I've already talked with Mrs. Bobby in that regard, to see how we can further support this effort to get it done, because they will not be able to raise an additional just for the pilings to go in, so that's where we are.
And the Breeden grant was, what, $100,000?
It's $100,000 for the fabrication.
Yeah, yeah, we, you know, the public love that project, and I think that, that needs to move forward, in my estimation.
I don't see any reason why we can't match that money to make that project.
Absolutely. Well, let's see if we got consensus right. Bill? Yes. Yes, we have consensus.
All right, so we'll move forward on the project. We're working with Mrs. Vincent and our engineer. Okay. I'm finished, Mayor.
We have liaison reports.
Yes.
And, sorry, Nate.
All right, yes, we had the Hampton Roads Regional Jail Authority Board meeting, was last week, on October 17th. Update on the staffing, currently only have 10 vacancies, which is a lot better than it has been in the past. They said they expect to have those filled by December 3rd. There's currently 14 officers attending the academy at this time. Medical update, currently have 44 residents with HIV, eight pregnant females, five on dialysis, seven that have cancer, we have two that are paraplegic, and we have 17 that are over the age of 65. They informed us that they had recently received 500 doses for flu shots, and they were issuing them out to the most at-risk individuals first. They had 300 more coming in, so they're providing them to the residents and the staff as well. They said the cost for the HIV patients in July was 131,000, just for that one month, and it, on average, is around $100,000 monthly, just for those medications. The information we provided said on September 30th, we pay for 250 beds at the regional jail, we only had 192 of those filled, leaving 58 beds vacant. Dr. Patton attended a meeting, and she says she would contact Sheriff Moore and see what we can do to fill the vacancies that we have there that we're currently paying for. That was all the update, and then, then we had a, we had a little special presentation that came up. This was in reference to crisis intervention team. One of the captains was talking about the crisis intervention team. People aren't aware that's, it's training that provides officers the skills to work safely and effectively with people in crisis, and provide options beyond incarceration to people with mental illness. This training is going through the, the officers at the regional jail, but it's also a team effort. It's been collaboration between Behavioral Health Care, Hampton Roads Regional Jail, the Portsmouth Sheriff's Department, and Portsmouth Police Department. And then they said, the special presentation, they said they wanted to recognize one of our board members there that was above and beyond. Then they advised, it was Dr. Patton, they said with her leadership dedication and support for this initiative, she was recognized as honorary CIT team member, and she was awarded a CIT lapel pin, and she was also given a CIT challenge coin, so I'd like to, everybody else to join me, and congratulations, Dr. Patton.
And Mayor, members of City Council, if I may, it was in 2015 when the state moved forward with a possibility that cities could apply for a grant that would assist with our incarcerated individuals or our residents who have mental illness. So, with Mrs. Braithwaite, and Mrs. Neal, and Mrs. Littlehill, we were one of the first in the state to finish that grant application. We have been now awarded the grant for a second year, and we're just proud to be able to be a city that sees beyond and roll up our sleeves and get it done that will impact other people. So, thank you, I'm humbled to be here.
Good. Good night.
I don't have nearly that good a news, but the Economic Development Authority met this month, and in open session, I can share that a resolution was passed authorizing the Economic Development Director to proceed with a contract with a developer for the properties directly across the street, on Crawford Street, the two small buildings that used to be used by the Police Department for some additional luxury apartments, which are by a developer that is not currently built in the city, but that's good news. The Portsmouth Urban Industrial Commission met today, got some more, very good news in closed session about some properties there that will come to fruition in a few months, and also because of the holiday schedules coming up in November and December, November, December won't meet again until January, unless something else comes up.
Okay, we had very healthy discussion with PRHA last night, but there were a couple things that didn't get brought to our attention. The Housing Authority has some additional housing vouchers that will serve veterans in the city of Portsmouth. I thought that was a great thing, to get some of our veterans off of the streets. Of course, the performance evaluation for the executive director is pending, so they're gonna be evaluating Mr. Bland's first year on the board. Also, they talked about the possibility of moving some of their PRHA board meetings to locations in the community at PRHA Housing, so that some of the residents would be able to take part in their meetings. I mentioned that we do our community meetings quarterly in the community, which gives residents an opportunity to meet with us. They also are still awaiting claims to be paid back from Allstate and FEMA for the 3.2 million that they paid out as a result of Hurricane Matthew. They, to date, have only received then 1.2 million, so they're still awaiting about $2 million from FEMA, the Virginia Department of Emergency Management, and Allstate.
Thank you. We have boards and commission members to discuss later in closed session on the personnel matters.
I represented you at the planning organization-
Thank you.
Which is-
Too overwhelming.
Just quick, I mean, it's too much to even try to recap, but I think the biggies was a lengthy discussion about the Hampton Roads Bridge Tunnel, and that's like number one priority, and the fact that the trussels, the bridges have to be replaced, and whether or not their monies can be used for that, you know, because the monies that the organization uses is for new construction, and they said the condition of those trussels, maintenance has been lacking for years, and it don't meet the qualifications. So it was a big discussion about that, and then a lot of the, there was about seven, eight things that are policy considerations to do, and maybe I'll get this typed up, and it's like eight or nine different things. Some very interesting things about what's gonna be tow, the tunnel and the bridge versus the entire expansion, there're gonna be some hot lanes, and the hot lanes won't, are gonna be in addition to the extra lanes, and not take away from the extra lane, the free lanes. So you'll have an option on the other part to, like HOV, or not choose it, or not choose it, but there would definitely be a toll on the Hampton Roads Bridge Tunnel and the High Rise Bridge, it's part of the agreement. It was very, very interesting, a lot of-
And this is a big deal. I mean, this will be the largest construction project ever in the state, and-
Billion, 3, 3.6 billion.
Yeah, and who pays for those trussels? It needs to go on VDOT, not on-
Right. That is exactly right, Mayor, and that's pretty much what everybody was saying.
That's what everybody agreed, came a consensus unanimously that that should be. Even, even the legislators that were there, Senator Wagner-
Yes, Wagner was very instrumental.
He was coming, discussing, and they're on the board, too.
Thank you for attending that.
Yeah, the Deputy Secretary was also there, Transportation, so he heard a lot of that about.
Good. I hope you took it apart.
He did, he didn't say all-
I left out something.
Pardon me?
I left out as part of my report.
All right, go ahead.
I, I forgot to tell you all about Veterans Small Business Week, there will be a presentation tonight at our meeting, kinda like we had for Manufacturing Week, and Robert Moore's doing a great job of bringing this back to our attention. Of course, we have a lot of veteran, small business, veteran-owned small businesses in our city. So, that's important.
And we'll have a proclamation, and Deborah's gonna read that, and they'll have representation.
Yes, sir.
Two, two things. One, we got word today that Billy Butt was elected to be a member of the Board of Directors for the Virginia Association of Assessors.
Oh, that's very good. Very good.
That's a real credit to you and to the city.
I'm looking forward to that service on that boards.
Good, congrats.
With that, we do, as Bill said, need a motion to go into closed session to consider a couple things.
I move to go into closed meeting pursuant to Virginia subsection 2.2-3711A1 for the purpose of discussing and considering prospective candidates for and appointees to boards and commissions, and pursuant to Virginia code subsection 2.2-3711A.7 for the purpose of consulting with legal counsel employed by the city regarding specific matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel specifically regarding the city attorney's regular report to City Council on the activities of his office, including litigation and potential litigation.
Thank you. We have a motion that's been made, and duly selected. Any discussion on the motion? Adam Clark, will you call the role, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucasberg?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Ruff?